Good evening, everybody. Welcome to tonight's town council meeting. Tonight is April 17th, 2023. We will begin our regular meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilman Underwood will lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we do not have any presentations or public hearing. I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes of our previous meeting.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the minutes of the last meeting, April 3rd, 2023, regular meeting.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Announcements and reports? Do we have any announcements or reports tonight? Rosemary?
Yes, Madam Chair. Housing Authority meeting was canceled for April. But just a report on the library trustees. They are continuing to consider an inquiry that they received from Yale's Peabody Museum about the bird egg collection. That's been in the library for quite a number of years. Most members were able to take part in a trip to the museum last week to learn more information about the possibility of locating the collection there for research and for sharing it online with public audiences all over the world. And I was able to go along in the trip and found it extremely interesting. And obviously, any future decision, of course, will be up to the Library Board of Trustees.
Great. Thank you so much. Does anybody else have anything to report? I'll report that I attended the Committee on Aging last week. It's their monthly report, monthly meeting, rather. They have a number of programs planned for the spring and the summer. They're also looking into their fall programming. I know that our Assistant Town Manager is going to give a very detailed report from the Senior Center, so I'm going to let you do that without being redundant if I do it first and then you do it second. So when you're time, you can do a little bit more than that. But they're an active group and they work very hard to ensure that the programming at the Senior Center stays in place. They're always looking for more volunteers, so anybody that's interested in volunteering, please call the Senior Center, let them know that you're available, and I know they'll find something for you to do. They're a very, very active group of people. Okay, appointments and reappointments to boards and commissions. Do we have any of those tonight, anybody? Nothing? We didn't have any on our agenda, so I guess we're all set with those. The next item is the Board of Education Liaison. The Board of Education is having their regular monthly meeting tonight. I did get some notes sent over by the chairperson. I will give a very, very brief synopsis of some of the items that were taken care of at their last meeting. They named the PCS All-Stars as Stephanie Barbogallo, Plainville High School Guidance Counselor. She received her award. She's a former student of Mr. LaPage's, who is one of the high school guidance counselors. So I'm sure it's always gratifying for the superintendent to have staff members who he was, as he was the principal at the high school. Also, Foster White, who has been a longstanding board member, was awarded the 2023 Connecticut Association of Schools Distinguished Friend of Education Award. This is a very prestigious award that Foster was given. I know that he is very dedicated to the Board of Education and to the education of children overall, not just to the board. So I congratulate him on receiving that. That's quite a big honor for him. Couple of other things that happened, I'm just going to go really quick, is there was a, there was a very long discussion regarding the middle school facilities update. I will not go into all of the details. These minutes are available online if you're interested to read the specifics. There is conversation about creating a secure vestibule at the middle school, although not a priority item. We can apply for that for a priority grant in terms of getting that done. Legislation is changing, but he is looking at some of these things to get done. There is a number of items that has been discussed between the town and the Board of Education and the superintendent regarding a full renovate like new or a update to the school. So there is still continuing conversation through the Board of Education regarding the middle school project, and it will continue with the town council as well. So that is the report from the town council. That was at their March meeting from the Board of Ed. Hey, Town Attorney, Attorney Mastriani, do you have anything for us tonight?
I actually do have one matter to advise the council on.
Okay.
I was contacted by Eversource regarding a gas leak on West Main Street near the White Oak Building next door here. Eversource is looking for permission from the town as well as the estate, the Tofflon Estate, to install a temporary regulator station and two four-inch main lines next to the buildings. The purpose is to divert the gas line and gas flow around the damaged area and to allow them time to repair the line. They estimate the repairs are going to take about a month, and once they're complete, they're going to restore the property to the current condition. Eversource is going to be preparing the agreement, and they're going to send it over to me for my review. Once I've reviewed and accepted it, then we'd be looking for the town council's permission to have probably Mike sign the agreement at some point.
Okay. So we'll be getting that at our next meeting or maybe?
Probably by the next meeting.
Next meeting, okay. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, our next item is report of the Town Manager. Michael?
Yes, good evening. I have a few items to report on, four items in particular, and then the dashboard, and then I'll hand off to Andy for happenings. But item one is the Honor Heights Sewer Extension Project Bid and Project Award. So as I mentioned, the last meeting, I reported that the town opened bids for the project, and of the seven proposals received, the apparent low bidder submitted a bid of $1,186,260. And that low bidder is Ludlow Construction of Ludlow, Massachusetts. Tiggen Bond Consulting, along with the Town Attorney, assisted the town engineer with the review of the low bid documents, and the team has completed their review and their due diligence and is recommending the award of the project to Ludlow. So there is an item under New Business to award bid 2023-15E to Honor Heights Sewer Extension Project to Ludlow Construction in the amount of $1,186,260. So it was considerably under what we anticipated in terms of bid, so that's great news. In addition to the award of the bid for construction, it is also recommended the town council set a preliminary assessment on the property owners, and the recommendation is $10,000. There is an item under New Business to authorize the Town Manager to file notices on the Plainville Land Records stating that a $10,000 preliminary sanitary sewer assessment is pending for the 80 properties affected by the Honor Heights Sewer Extension Project. A final assessment will be set after the project is completed. And going forward, this project is estimated to begin or to get underway for June of this year. So that is moving along. Item number two is 2023 Neighborhood Assistance Act. This program is a tax credit program designed to provide funding for municipal and tax-exempt organizations by providing a corporate business tax credit for businesses which make cash contributions to these entities. Interested organizations must mail the complete application form to the town for review by 3:00 p.m. on April 19th this week. A fillable form is available on the Department of Revenue Services website, the state of Connecticut Department of Revenue Services website. And as part of the application process, the municipality must hold a public hearing on all programs and must vote to approve all applications. There's also an audit feature that is triggered if any of the organizations receive a contribution that is more than $25,000. So there is an item under New Business to establish a public hearing on May 1st, 2023, at 7:00 p.m. to hear public comment on the proposals that may come in. Item three is the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail Alignment Update. And as I mentioned, again, previous meetings, we've talked about this and trying to get the alignment for Phase Two or the northern section. So there is some additional information, but let me just say that the modification, there are two, and there is a map before you tonight at your seat. Slight modifications to the trail alignment along Perrin Road, which would hug the property line and require removal of pitch pines in that area, and that is the airport property. As you see, the green line is really hugs the property line down Perrin Road and makes a 90-degree turn Johnson Avenue and then before darting across the road through Carlin Switch. So that is a bit of a modification or a point of information for the council to be aware of. So we're purposely doing that and working with the state to do that to preserve any potential or future development of the airport property. That amounts to about seven acres in that area. So anything that comes off of that line gets into establishing buffers, and it really eats into the acreage there. And so as that trail continues, it also has a second area modification involving Tomaso Nature Park. And at this point, I want to say that I made a mistake and I misspoke in terms of communicating what I thought would be a, not penetrating the site itself, the Tomaso Nature Park. Until I was out there walking the site on Friday, I had previously just been looking at property boundaries and property lines and looking at the path that was aligned as it skirted, and it does skirt. It's right near the property line and abuts the landfill, but it's not, there's no room in between Tomaso Park and the landfill to put a trail. That's already been explored and established that this is coming through the gate into Tomaso Park using the trails, the one trail along that perimeter to get all the way down to the roadway's garage and essentially the salt shed is where it terminates. So I may have left with the impression that we're looking for a compromise to be outside the gate, so to speak, and not have any entrance into the park. This is entering the park. This is in the park, and there's no way around that. There's no way to get from point A to point B without coming through the park. Now, we've aligned it in such a way that it's not bisecting and coming directly through the heart of the nature park, but it is on the edge. And so I wanted to, opportunity to clarify that and to make sure that we understand, because I now, having walked it, better understand that. And so now, there's an effort with the state to work on mitigation strategies. And I also included a couple of extra slides in my notes, and I hope you got those with the help of Mark DeVoe, the town planner, to highlight or overlay some of those treatments, if you will, buffers, if you will. So fencing, split rail fencing to kind of delineate, this is the trail, and on the other side with signing, this is Tomaso Nature Park, and put in some vegetative buffers and put that in a couple of key locations as the trail winds its way. It passes over two pedestrian bridges, and I have a lot of photos. Certainly, I'm sure a lot of you have walked it and know it firsthand, but I have pictures as well. Look at the two structures there that will be upgraded and updated as well. But I am meeting, so you know, with former curator Art Marino tomorrow. We're going to be onsite. I'm going to get his insight and his input as well, because there's some concern about the turtle habitat, breeding habitat, and the location of that to the trail. And I'm sure other species impact as well, because I believe he has quite a bit of knowledge in terms of the nature park. So I'll be meeting with him tomorrow, going through that, and then we'll continue our conversation with the state of Connecticut. And I will tell you that recently, they sent an email. They're ready to set up a public informational meeting for July to have Phase Two preliminary design laid out and get public input and public comments. So we've got a little bit of time in meeting tomorrow and going through these details, if you will. So I apologize for that mistake and certainly hope to get more accurate information, and we'll do the best we can to fit in a compromise with the conservation members and, of course, Art. So that is an item under New Business in terms of looking at agreeing to the modification so we can send back to the state of Connecticut that we're okay with the Perrin Road line alignment, and that we'll look for those treatments in terms of modifications within Tomaso Park as well. So that item appears under New Business. I was also, if you see in my notes, going to suggest a May 1st, I did suggest a May 1st workshop for that and getting to a better understanding of the timeline, but that can be moved off. Obviously, the middle school is a priority, high priority, and we'll move that down the road. Because like I said, we don't even have the public hearing, likely not to happen until July anyway. But I wanted the council to have that information, so maybe the second meeting or June, we can do that.
Any questions so far about that? No? Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And item four is Proposed Ordinances on Tax Payments. So Sarah Carey has been working on the two new ordinances related to tax payments. The first ordinance would give the tax collector the authority to waive small balances under $5. And of course, there are various reasons why the tax office ends up with the accounts, and these small amounts would be more costly to collect than the revenue received. So it's one of those, it makes sense and something we need to take a look at. So she had brought that forward, but also on the other side, the statutes allow municipalities to adopt an ordinance to waive no more than 25, what else? I'm sorry. That's part of the same one. But the second ordinance pertains to refunds, and pursuant to the general statutes, tax collectors also authorized to retain any payment in excess of the amount due of any property tax interest or lien fee, which is less than $5, whenever the tax collector determines that the administrative cost of issuing a refund is likely to exceed the amount of the refund. So these are little, small housekeeping items that make a big difference, I think, in terms of their administration and can help clean things up. So anyway, in the event that there is a small balance for some of those overpayments, if there's another open balance in the same name on something else, the tax office would be able to transfer those items that are under $10, I mean, under $5, excuse me. And we thought reasonable limitation for both would be $5 in both cases. But again, this is an item that would be appearing under New Business, because you would have to set a public hearing date and have input on that before proposing any new ordinance. And I just want to thank Andy and Cindy for working and Sarah for working on that. They found a home for it, and I think Mike and the office has agreed that they found a home in which to place the ordinance into the code, so it would be seamless, I hope. And it should be relatively straightforward, asking to, in those cases, two separate ordinances, but they'd be linked together in the same location of the code. So that's all I have at this point for those items. Any questions on those four items?
Any questions for Michael about his report so far? Okay.
Okay, then I'll move on to item five, which is Dashboard, and that is the financial dashboard. Again, the trend looks good, looks very good. These are numbers through March 31st, so we're heading into the last quarter. And the overall budget numbers are of a budget of $66,110,220 through March 31st. We spent $45,505,833. That represents a 68.83%, and that is under the two-year average of 70.93%. So that breaks down on the general government side expenditures through March 31st, $18,315,023. From a $24,801,423 budget, represents 73.85%. The two-year average is 76.18, so we're under the two-year average there by about 3%, which is great. So Board of Education side, similar, $41,308,797 budget. Expenditures through March 31st of $27,190,810. That represents 65.82%. And the two-year average is 67.71%. Further down on the police overtime, again, good news there. The trend is really good. A budget of $550,000, an expenditure through March 31st of $303,978. So that represents 55%, 55.27% expended. So again, one quarter of the fiscal year remaining, they currently have a balance of $246,000 in their overtime budget. So I think really good work there on the police side.
I just wanted to mention, I looked at last year's police overtime at this same point in time, and we were at this exact time, 86% of the overtime spent. So it's quite a difference from last year to this year in terms of how that overtime has been managed.
Yeah, thank you. On the roadways overtime, they have a budget of $76,895 through the 31st, March 31st. They've spent $58,626. So the percentage spent, 76%. So they're right on, in terms of track for the fiscal year, but their two-year average has been $85,173. So they're under their two-year average, but tracking just about right where they should be for three quarters of the year. The building and grounds, same situation with their overtime, a smaller budget of $25,625. And through March 31st, they've spent $19,620, so that's 76.5% expended. And again, their two-year average is $21,757, so they're just riding a little bit under their two-year average, but running right on in terms of their fiscal year. And here's where it gets interesting in terms of the roadways, snow overtime and building and ground snow overtime. So the roadway's snow overtime, budget of $53,325, and through March 31st is $20,530. So they've spent 38.5% of their budget, and I don't anticipate, I'm no weatherman, but I don't anticipate any other problems or bills associated with snow overtime. So if we look at the balance there that I think would be coming back, would be $32,795. So that's a pretty good chunk of change in the overtime, and that's attributed to a very mild season, obviously. And the same plays out in building and grounds, where they have a budget of $26,158. They spent $17,198, so 65% expended, but they'll have a balance of $8,960 coming back as well. So a bit of good news there. On the municipal solid waste tonnage and hauling tonnages are, continue to run under the two-year average. The tonnage through March 31st was 4,147 tons. The two-year average, 4,465, so running about 317 tons under the two-year average. And expenditures to date on a budget of 422,400, they've spent $276,562. So good news there. I wish I could say the same for recycling. Unfortunately, the rate has gone up there. The tonnage is okay, is in line. Through March 31st, the tonnage has been 863 tons. The two-year average is 951, so they're under, but the price and the cost of disposing of that is up. So their expenditure to date is $69,925 on a budget of $54,180, so they're expended on that. So unfortunately, we've got some work to do there with respect to recycling. Moving on to the revenues through March 31st, also good news there in terms of, the trend is pretty much the same. The revenues, and I'll give a shorter version here, I guess, in terms of the numbers you have, but our revenues are tracking at 88.62%. The two-year average is 86. So we're above, which is great. And on the tax side, current taxes collected, $48,887,864, representing 99.77%. And it's March 31st, so I don't know, I don't know how to explain that, but that's, I think, phenomenal numbers, and I keep asking Rob to double-check those numbers, because I just, I don't understand how they're that high this early with a quarter to go. But that's just something to look at. So good news, and it's right where we want it. Nothing to report on the next box, which is the unassigned fund balance and the audited financials, nothing unchanged there. Rob has, our finance director, has a draft of the audit, but that's it. We are still waiting, pushing hard to get finalization on that.
So with the draft, how does it preliminarily look in terms of, is it close to what he had anticipated, or is he reluctant to talk about it yet?
Reluctant to talk about it, but I keep, as you, I keep pushing to get some, pull some information out of him, and I think, by and large, I think he'll say that it's not bad at all.
Great.
And that fund balance, 1.4 million taking that hit last year, it was really, I think we're able to absorb that. So I think it looks pretty good.
Okay, thank you.
Next is the special funds. So we have the Recreation Fund first and a $270,000 budget through March 31st, expenditures of $148,572, so 55% expended, and the two-year average, again, is due to COVID, but 33. So it hasn't quite, the whole COVID hasn't quite gone through that, the whole shaking out process. But that, obviously, and we're also on the cusp in terms of spring programs, summer programs, so I would see those expenditures be going up. In addition to the other side of the equation, the revenues are at $99,000 through March 31st, so 51% received. And again, I think that activity will be reflected in the fourth quarter as we head into summer programming. But nothing there that shocks or is alarming. I think it's right in line with where they're supposed to be. Robinson Airport, same thing. I think they're right in line with where they are. There's a lot of activity, as you know, going on there with respect to the different projects, the ALOS Poppy Project, the roof projects, the fencing project, all happening there. And obviously, the revenue side, the infusion of the 250 through ARPA shows a fund balance there, a healthy fund balance of $370,722. So everything looks in line there. The Water Pollution Control Authority facility budget also looks good. They have expenditures through March 31st of $3,577,197, 84.27% expended over their two-year average. And I think, again, two personnel issues that are now fully up to complement. And I think, again, to personnel issues that are now fully up to complement in terms of their hiring process. So they, they do not have any vacancies at this point. They've filled everything. And so they're running, I think, a little richer in terms of the expenditures with the personnel costs. But the revenue side looks very healthy. And again, the timing of the, of the sewer bills going out, they are above their two-year average on their revenues collected to date through March 31st. So it's, you know, one of those timing issues in terms of payments. So they've exceeded the two-year average, which is, which is great. And then the library budget expenditures through March 31st, $508,540. So a percentage spent of 66.61 percent, which is under their two-year average of 71.83, which is great. And their revenue side collected through March 31st, $510,931. Percentage received is 70.59 percent, just under their two-year average of 71.38. So just a little, little off on the revenue side in terms of the two-year average, but well below on the expenditure side. So I think from my perspective, everything looking pretty, pretty good there. And the last page is the major projects report. And not a lot, not much of anything has changed there, except I, I think I had the wrong number on the road bond because we have all of the revenue to date of $10,636,905. So that is with a balance of $2,659,626. And of course, there's a very active road paving project underway, season is underway and very active. And ARPA funding as well, not much to, to report there. So I think once we get through the summer, we'll have more, more to report with respect to major projects and potentially even adding the Honor Heights sewer project to our major projects list going forward through the summer.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Michael regarding the dashboard or anything else included in his report? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And now happenings.
Thank you very much. So to start off, the annual all-day budget vote is scheduled to take place on Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, from 6:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the Plainville Firehouse. And residents can go to the firehouse to vote anytime during that time period. The Historical Society is hosting an event called Time Was: Our Last Generation of Railroaders. That'll be on Saturday, April 22nd at 2:00 PM. It'll be at the Plainville Historical Center at 29 Pierce Street. And retired Freight Line worker Al Varelli and retired ticket master Bill Sample will share memories of working on the railroad line in Plainville and in the surrounding areas. If you are interested in registering, please email plvhistorical@gmail.com. From the Plainville Public Library, the library's Youth Services Department will be raising caterpillars during the week of April 24th. Library visitors can watch them morph into butterflies during the month of May. And to coincide with the caterpillar's arrival, the Youth Services Department will have a beaded caterpillar drop-in craft during library hours during the week of April 24th, which is open, open to anybody ages five and plus, in addition to their caregivers. The New Britain Symphony Orchestra will present a Beatles String Quartet. This is on Wednesday, May 10th at 6:30 PM. The Beatles String Quartet will be performing songs made famous by the iconic band. And you can visit the library's calendar at plainvillect.com livery to register. And also, the library has hotspots and Chromebooks available for checkout to anyone 18 years or older with a valid Connecticut library card. So if you are in need of either a hotspot for Wi-Fi or a Chromebook, you can head over there to check them out. From the Police Department, National Prescription Drug Take Back Day is this Saturday, April 22nd, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This day provides a safe and convenient and responsible means to dispose of prescription drugs while also educating the general public about potential for abuse of medication. So if you're unable to join the Police Department on the 22nd, I believe they're going to be setting up kind of like a drive-through, so you can drive-through, drop off any prescription drugs that you may have. But if you're unable to attend on the 22nd, the Plainville Police Department does always have a disposal bin inside their lobby area that residents can drop off any prescription drugs. And if you'd like some more information on that event, you can go to www.dea.gov/takebackday. This is a national event. From Youth Services, Plainville Youth Services Coalition for Positive Youth Development is sponsoring the Hidden in Plain Sight Mock Bedroom during the Superintendent's Showcase this Thursday, April 20th, from 6:30 PM to 8:00 PM. Hidden in Plain Sight is an interactive presentation for adults and parents to raise awareness of signs that may point to risky adolescent behaviors. Open to adults only, this program recreates a mock teenage bedroom or backpack that parents and grandparents and educators and other adults can explore to identify hidden drug paraphernalia and warning signs associated with drug or alcohol abuse. There will also be a Mental Health Resource Boulevard that will be taking place during the showcase and that provides youth with various topics such as mental health, substance abuse, trauma, and grief. There'll be informational flyers and other resources available for parents to take away. And service providers will also be available to answer basic questions and to connect loved ones with any type of assistance that may be needed. And finally, from the Senior Center, for any information on Senior Center programs, you can call the Plainville Senior Center at 860-747-5728. And all programs are free and open to the public unless otherwise indicated. Snappy Senior Photography will be Thursday, April 20th at 10:30 AM. You can join this event where participants will share photos of their favorite events and activities. Veteran Social Hour on Tuesday, April 25th at 9:30 AM, conducted by Sherry Voe, a Veterans' Liaison for Hartford Healthcare Senior Services. Veterans are welcome, anyone over the age of 60 and their spouses. Healthy Bodies Series on Tuesday, April 25th, from 10:00 AM to 11:00 AM. And it'll continue weekly through May 30th. You can join Karen Pagliaro, a nurse who is exploring healthy eating habits that can assist you in losing or maintaining weight and can help move your body in a healthier direction. They'll share recipes, enjoy a healthy meal together, welcome guest speakers, investigate techniques to reduce stress, all in a supportive and welcoming atmosphere. And meal planners will also be shared. Memories Cafe at the Senior Center will be Thursday, April 27th at 2:00 PM. Memories Cafe is a warm and welcoming program for individuals with memory loss. Anyone experiencing memory loss is welcome to attend, and so is their loved ones and caregivers. Book Buds is a book club. They'll be discussing their April book, A Splendid Ruin by Megan Chance, on April 28th. That's Friday, April 28th at 10:00 AM at the Senior Center. And finally, the Kentucky Derby Lunch and Party on Thursday, May 4th at 12:00 PM to 1:30 PM. The cost is $8 and sign-up ends on April 28th. And this is a fun afternoon of eating and bedding on horses. Lunch will, they put quotes, so I'm going to add the quotes here, too. Lunch will feature Kentucky-style fried chicken tenders, potato salad, cornbread, and pecan pie, and there will be prizes and treats as well. So that is the lineup for the happenings.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments for either of the reports tonight? Nope, we appreciate that. Thank you again. Okay, during this time of our meeting is a public comment section. At this time, the public is welcome to come to the podium. You will have three minutes to speak to the council. Please state your name and address if you wish to speak to the council. Does anybody wish to speak to the council? Could you just turn that on? There's a little button.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Curtis. My address is 15 Maiden Lane. I was, I wanted to use my time just to remind some of the members of the council that you work for the entire town of Plainville, not just the people who voted for you. I recall at our meeting at the middle school, one of the members made, made it clear that he represents the constituents who voted for him. And the fact that over 700 of us signed a petition asking for permission to vote on a matter that impacts all of us and that that was ignored is really disgraceful. The other thing I would like to say is there's been comments about how the Republicans took the majority. I want to remind you that you do not have a mandate in this town. We have pathetically poor turnout in this town. And I looked up everybody's numbers. You won by maybe 100 votes each. So when you're thinking about making decisions for the town, I would like to request that you consider all of us who have children in the school, who don't have children in the school, but care about making Plainville a place where families come. What kind of community do we want? Do we want a thriving community where young people come with their families and they will pay taxes and live here and make it a better place? Maybe our numbers have declined, but maybe it's because people are choosing other towns where the emphasis is on education, where there is respect for the teachers and the staff who worked so hard to benefit our children. And by the way, without our children, we have nothing. So those of you who don't have children, even in our schools, I would like you to consider that you benefited from public schools most likely. And that if you have children someday, they would benefit. And we have a responsibility to make this town better for all of us. Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Mary McGinley Kuchar. I'm here tonight. I'm here for one reason. I'm just disgusted by this board. Not all of you, but by this board. Last year, I was request, I was told that about how Mr. LaPage wanted to look into getting money to benefit the middle school to do some renovations. So I, that was, so I'm going to start just at the top here. I'm here because last year I came and I was told by the town, this town Republican committee here, Kathy Pagliosi, Deborah Tompkins, Jacob Rocco, and Joe Cantonzaro, not Mr. Underwood. But I was told that basically you don't care about the taxpayers in this town. And they were obviously too stupid to have a vote onto whether or not do renovations at the middle school because you all know better than the rest of us. Myself and many others wrote letters supporting the renovations and Superintendent LaPage applying for funds through the state. These letters were either ignored if ever read, and the Republican four put the kibosh on it. This year, once again, Mr. LaPage came to the town council, as is required, with supporting letters and parents. And once again, the Republican four put the kibosh on it. Instead of the, I know it's costing 60 million, but with the reimbursement, the $24 million renovations through the Healthy Debt Management funds would have little or no impact on the taxes in town. And this is from the finance director in town. The Republican four want to do a half-assed $10 million renovation, which cannot be, cannot apply for priority projects grants and would fully fall on the shoulders of the taxpayers of this town. The level of ignorance and arrogance of the Republican four members is unbelievable. First, why is there a Board of Education meeting tonight competing with this meeting when we're talking about the middle school? Second, why do these Republican four think they know more than the highest, most educated Board of Education member, his team, and all of the work that they have done? Third, what are you afraid of? Why not let the taxpayers decide and vote? Fourth, you want to close the school and potentially sell it. Really, Jacob Rocco? You're going to throw money away on a study and tell, and when they tell you it's not feasible, that there's no room at the other schools? Come on. Fifth, because of your ignorance and your arrogance, three members of the building committee that were part of that have left not to come back. Four, and six here, we have a town council member, Joey Cantonzaro, who last week stated that Superintendent LaPage sprung this on them last minute. They had no idea that they were looking to do renovations on the middle school. Really? They've been working on it for three years. Educate yourself. And then we also had Jacob Rocco state that he's here to support only the people who voted for him. How can we have anything fair done in this town council when somebody makes a statement like that? You're not going to care what I said. I didn't vote for you. So you obviously don't care what I had to say. It's just, it's just ridiculous. So seventh here, your $10 million half-ass renovation will not fix the safety issues in MSP. In today's world, a strictly American problem, we have mass shootings. All a shooter would have to do is to blow out the glass in the front, shoot the armed guard, and then they would have at it at the middle school. And I want to know, so what is your endgame? You are elected officials. You are not dictators. Who do the four do you think you are?
Can you wrap up?
Yeah, I can, I can, I can.
I'm sure. Thank you so much.
This is a democracy, the last I checked. This is not a dictatorship. Start, stop taking away the votes of the taxpayers of the town of Plainville. Enough with all of you. You're disgusting.
Anybody else wish to speak to the council that has not done so?
Colleen McGary for Orchard Lane. So I'm here just like everyone else. Little bit of background about me. 20 years in professional life has been in data and analytics and financial scenario building. I'm a person who goes, looks at the data, compiles the data, looks at it, and says, hey, this is the one that makes the most sense, both from a financial perspective and from an all-around perspective. That's my job for 20 years. This is downright embarrassing. The fact that we want to look at another option that makes no sense is ridiculous. In my field, what we call this is analysis paralysis. It is a complete waste of time to look at a scenario that makes no sense. Mr. LaPage has already stated that if you close the middle school, you have nowhere to put the other students. Why are we wasting our time and taxpayer money on the backs of our children here for this? This is ridiculous. It feels like we are just holding back and waiting to not make a decision. It's ridiculous. I, along with hundreds of other people in this town, came and said, let's put it to the town. Let the town vote. I'm not sure what the holdup is, but it needs to end. Put the children of this town first and move forward.
Anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Could I just say one thing, Madam Chair?
Sure.
Just, you know, I know we're all very passionate and emotional. I just, I would refrain from the clapping. You know, typically, this is for the speaker to address the council. And I think the clapping is just, not tonight. I just don't think it's appropriate. And if you can refrain from that, if you want, you can certainly get up and speak and voice your opinion, but I would just avoid the clapping. That's all I would say.
Hi, my name is Christina Corvello. I have three hats. I'm a resident. I have a child at Plainville Schools, and I'm also a teacher at MSP. So I hear, I've been hearing a lot about data collection, and I've been hearing a lot about getting more information. And so I wanted to propose an idea. I think that you guys getting as much information about the middle school is the best idea. Okay? I am inviting each one of you into my classroom in the next nine days, because that's before May 1st, to come and observe me, observe the students, walk around the school, have a tour. I'll even coordinate the facilities to be there. You can look at some more of the, you know, mechanical stuff if you want. I'll have you meet with the principal. I'll do whatever I need to do to get you guys to get as much information firsthand that you can. Okay? So it's great to get a consultant to come in, but I think what some people are pointing at is that a consultant is just a neutral person, and we aren't neutral people. We live in this town. You know, our children go to this school. We need, you guys need to get the firsthand experience of the middle school. So I do invite every single one of you to come to my classroom and spend a day with me, or as, or as long as you can with me. And I would coordinate you to meet with other people so you can gather information. Okay? Because that's what you've been saying. You want to gather information. You want to gather information. You want to gather data. And you need to do it before May 1st when you have that meeting. So you have nine days, starting from tomorrow. So if any of you wants to take me up on it, you can find me on the website. You can email me. And I would be happy to have any of you guys come into my classroom and get as much information as you can, a firsthand look at what it's like at the middle school. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so? Anybody else? Oh.
Hi, my name is, hi, my name is Melissa Sweeney. I'm at 40 Glenwood Drive. I'm here like everybody else, and I know this is not a question and answer, I guess so hypothetically. I guess I'm still curious about what's happened between last year and this year when Mr. LaPage wasn't allowed to apply for the wasn't allowed to apply for the grant. When I took the tour, so I've got family members, friends that work at the school, at the middle school, and then nephew that also attends, and I've heard lots about it. And I hadn't been in there since I was a child or a middle schooler. It's really clear that there's safety and security issues there. When I saw the elevator and we're talking about students that likely have mobility issues being stuck on the elevator, it was my five-year-old next to me that said, mommy, that sounds dangerous. And it is. And so I'm wondering, what have you guys done to collect data in the last year? It's feeling pretty irresponsible that you don't have it yet. I am asking and not knowing this whole process. I'm hoping that it's possible that you could at least allow Mr. LaPage to apply for the grant. Let him apply for that. And if you all need to seek additional data simultaneously, then let's see where we're at. Let us vote, get all the information we need, and then the voters will decide, based on all the data that you collected, where do we go from here? Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Hi, Laura Mian for Orchard Lane. So bear with me a minute because I was taking some notes while everyone was talking earlier. And the new data to me today was that we've had about 400 or so students. The enrollment has dropped. And that's over 20 years. So with that data, it sounds like, oh, we've got all this room for all these students. The enrollment has dropped. Not if you've been in our classrooms. What that data tells me is that 20 years ago, our classes were way too overcrowded. So anyone that's visited the schools recently, you'd be able to see that our classes are at capacity. Some of them are overcapacity. I think it would really be unethical to try to cram, even if we could. Say we spend all this money, do the analysis, we can cram five schools worth of kids into four buildings. Why would we do that? Even if we could, why would we want to do that to our students and to our town and to our teachers? It has been proven that students learn faster, perform better in smaller class sizes. A class size of fewer than 20 students results in more individual attention, increased participation, and better communication between the teacher and the students. We know this as educators. We know this as former students. We all sat in classrooms. That students thrive when they have connections with their teachers and when they know that their teachers, they're grownups, that's you guys, the town council, the Board of Ed, that they care about them and they want them to thrive. So for instance, I have a class of 20 students. It's a very common class size for me. 43-minute class. So that means by the time I come on in, guys, get them settled down, they're middle schoolers, they're excited. I do my lesson, my introduction. I hope it's riveting. We set up our art materials, we do our project, we got to clean up that art materials because I got another group of 20 at the door. How much time do you think I get per student? One minute, if I'm lucky. 20 kids in my classroom, get me one minute, one-on-one. I scramble around the room to try to give them my attention, to let them know I care, to check in with them. How is your vacation? Oh, is your dog feeling better? That looks awesome. Let me help you with that there. One minute of connection time. If we consolidate our schools, or even attempt to consolidate our schools, we are taking so much away from our students. So that's it. I would really like, again, to ask that you allow Mr. LaPage to submit the application to apply for the state grant so that we can renovate MSP like new. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
My name is Sophie Mann, and I'm for Orchard Lane, and I'm in fourth grade at Tofflon. I don't think you should close the middle school and move more kids to Tofflon and Wheel because my grade is already really big. Every year, my principal has to move around teachers because of how big my grade is. My class size right now has 18 kids. The biggest class in my grade is over 20. If you put any more kids in our classes, we will be too crowded and it will be harder for us to learn. If you move the middle school to Linden, you would have to lose lots of teachers, and that's not right. We need all of our teachers to help us learn. I would like to ask if you could allow Mr. LaPage to help us get MSP renovated. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Hi, my name is Ben Sweeney, 40 Glenwood Drive. And as a, both parent and resident of Plainville, I'm very concerned with the direction that this board is taking in regards to the middle school. I have several points of discussion in this regard. First, I am a manufacturing engineer responsible for approximately $15 million worth of capital investment at the company I work for. And over the past two years, I've seen a 30% to 50% increase in the cost of facilities, equipment. And I, I really just think that delayed decisions will be very costly to the taxpayers of this town. Next, the 11 million is an estimate only for essential items. Who's to say five years from now, we're not going to need millions more? And then five years after that, we're not going to need millions more? And then so on and so on. I personally believe that replacing all of the items in the renovate like new proposal is going to cost less to the taxpayers, especially after the state grant and refunding. Both of my children are in Tofflon now, have class sizes in the realm of 18 students. I constantly hear that the teachers are overwhelmed. And any more, I just think the class sizes would be unmanageable for the teachers that we have there. And my last point is that the Board of Education has already arrived at the renovate like new. They are a Republican board, and I think any more discussion, any more consultants on this would just be a waste of time and taxpayer dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Hi, Unka Barans Cook, 55 Redstone Hill. There would be, I just wanted to say, more parents here. This is a very tricky time of day for most of us. I left my son's baseball game to be here. I feel like it's my duty as the middle school PTC president to make sure that parent voices are heard when they can't. But for, for as far as it goes, I was dumbfounded last year when the town council didn't put the renovate as new through, since it is the best option, not only for our students, teachers, and staff, but also fiscally, the best option for taxpayers. Renovate like new would give us a brand-new school with $36 million in grants from the state, whereas piecemealing will only fix some of the problems and with prices going up, will end up costing more with no money coming back. It's my understanding that taxes would not increase with renovate like new. But still, you won't approve of even putting it to a town vote. All other school renovation projects were put to a community vote, just not MSP. We now have close to 800 signatures of Plainville residents who would like the opportunity to at least vote on the renovate like new project, and counting. If the town then votes no, that's one thing. But for you, the town council, to decide for all of Plainville that the project can't happen is absolutely ridiculous. You are the folks, you are supposed to be representing the folks in Plainville, but certainly you are not doing what the people in Plainville are asking for. And now, your absurd idea to close a school or move the middle school to one of the elementary schools. I can't even touch on that. To briefly address the study that you've been now talking about to hire someone to do, shouldn't that have been done before 85,000, I believe, was spent two years ago when Mr. LaPage and his group went through a year's worth of work to put the renovate like new together? I don't understand why we're coming back to that. It definitely feels to me, and to many of us, like this is all a stall tactic so Mr. LaPage can't apply for the renovate like new by the June deadline. Let's just keep coming up with things to do so that he can't do it. This shouldn't be politically driven. It should be about the kids and our town. Do the right thing, let the Plainville community decide what happens to Plainville community schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that hasn't done so?
Tom Foti, I live at 15 Bradley Street. And I just had a couple of comments to direct to the chairwoman. At the tour and meeting, however we want to phrase that, at middle school, you made a couple interesting comments that I just want to make sure everyone has heard, and would like you to think a little bit harder about. One was that why would you allow the town to vote on something you don't personally support? And I think that's fair that you might not personally support the renovate as new project, but the time for you to express that lack of support is in the voting booth along with the rest of us, as you are a resident of the town. Not to prevent the rest of us from having the vote because you don't like it. The second thing you said, what I thought was interesting, was, I just want to make sure I get this right, was that why would you put something out to vote that you don't know will pass? I hope that's not your standard for anything you vote on. I'm pretty sure you didn't know for sure you'd get elected every year, and yet you run. So it seems like an odd standard to, to hold every piece of legislation to, every referendum, every vote. So I just want to make sure that's on the record, that that's how you stand. And I'd be curious, I know it's not a question and answer, but I'd love to hear, if you have a chance, to respond to why those two statements you made. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
I'm Natalia Kosa-Brukova, 8 Maxine Road. I'm sorry, guys, it wasn't the plan for me to talk today, and I do have an accent. I'm sorry about that. I'm resident and citizen. I moved in Plainville now, almost nine years ago with my family, and that was our choice. And that was a great choice. And that very nice community welcomed us, welcomed my family. And we had such a nice meeting here, a lot of support from different people. And why I decided to speak out loud now, because when we moved in here, first thing which you check, it's school system. I am mother of three boys. They are different ages, elementary, middle, and high school. And when I moved in here, that was first thing, I checked what schools are here in Plainville. And when you are going to invest in middle school, you're actually investing in your future and in high school. And when somebody have pre-teen or teen here, they do understand why this age is so special. It's fragile and wild age at the same time. When your kid is entering sixth grade, it's babyish kid. When he's leaving sixth grade and moving into seventh, it's a long body with wild eyes, and he even doesn't know how to control his emotions in the body. And when you visit middle school, you will see how teachers are trying to teach them and to make this transition really smooth from elementary school to high school. It's a really special, special age. And why I decided to share my experience, because, guys, you're talking about your future, a future of town, but I'm really scared of that because for me, that was my past. I grew up in a school system where kids are not separated. They're at, they stay at the same huge building with classes with 36, 38, even sometimes, 40 kids at one room. And I know how that goes. And I don't, I moved here with my family because I wanted, I'm sorry, better future for my family and for my kids. If you would like, I could share with everybody, I'm open for that, my experience, how that goes, how kids feel in that environment. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
John Kisslock, 65 Forests Lane Avenue. I don't mean to disagree with Consulman, Wazirko, and Moranti, but I served as a volunteer for six years on capital project building committees for the high school and Tofflon. And I am not a fan of renovate as new. And these people here who are criticizing you are clueless of what goes on in a renovate as new project. I have never seen so much waste in my life by giving architects a blank check, and the things that they're doing were completely unnecessary for the project. I don't want to waste my time on this tonight, but schools do not teach. Buildings do not teach, the teachers teach. So guys can put that in your hat. Now, I hope this council's not upset with me for the last meeting when I rejected your budget vote because, you know, I didn't take anything, didn't mean anything personal. If I saw any one of you out on the street in trouble, I would jump in to help you. So I just want you to know that. On our budget vote, I hope you're going to publicize that a little more with your science, the high school here and everything, because people don't come out and vote. The other thing, my main reason here is Pottery Wiskey Park Pond again, that Lisa Lozier was jumping up and down and doing backflips because the Park and Rec agreed with the proposal to close the park down to boating, close the boat launch area. Couple of things I want to say about that. The boat launch area is the only access for the town to bring in vehicles for building and grounds. That's an access that we can use for rescue, water rescue operation practices, ice rescue operations. And at one time, I believe, maybe some of you remember, we had a paddle boat. The town had a paddle boat on that pond. And I think the pond is made for recreation, and the more recreation that this town has the better. And that's going to say, Park and Rec is misguided. They should be pushing for this to be used more instead of less. So I've been talking to you about this person for a couple of meetings now. I hope this council just ignores everything that's sent to you from Conservation Commission and Park and Rec and just leave everything the way it is for that park because I think we need, we need more recreation. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Lou Frangos, 10 Fairbank Street. Following this lead about the schools, out of curiosity, what prompted this change? All of a sudden that we're going to get, eliminate the middle school? What's the logic behind this?
To eliminate the middle school? It's actually to do a feasibility-
Yes, to close it down.
To do a feasibility study, to look at all of the schools and determine if the middle school, which is 30 years old and can be renovated like new, if that's something we should pursue or should we look at the schools in its entirety and see if there's some other plan that we could do?
And who was part of-
$60 million is the price tag today.
And who was part of this committee, if I may ask?
I'm sorry?
Who was part of the committee that made this decision or the thought process?
Well, the council talked about it tonight, so we were, you know-
Because I guess last week you had a meeting on this already.
No, we didn't. Last week, there was an open house, and there was a question and answer forum at the middle school, and this topic came up at that time.
Okay.
We did not have a meeting on it prior to tonight, no.
And the prompting of closing the school, one of them is, and this is one I'm really curious about, class sizes are getting smaller. Is that what it looks like in the future? That our class sizes and the town of Plainville are getting smaller?
The enrollment has decreased. We can say that for a certainty. It has. Whether this class sizes are smaller, I don't, I can't answer that because it's probably across the board with all the across the districts, so. But the total enrollment for the town of Plainville, student enrollment has declined over the past 10 years.
Okay.
Does that help?
Okay. No, because it seems like when you start closing down a building or a school, it looks, there's more of a projection in time. This seems to be, well, right now, we're here, but we don't know what's coming. So that's a little concern, but that's another, that's another-
That would hopefully get more guidance if we had an outside study done that would be able to look at projections such as that.
Okay. In the case, say we did close down, it came to fruition, or we closed the middle school. Who would absorb the middle school? How would you go about absorbing the students in the school?
Who would absorb the middle school students?
Yes. I don't know what the number is, but say there's 300 kids in middle, middle is now shut down. is now shut down, where do they go?
This will be explored during a study that we would like to have happen. If it's possible, it would be explored. If they could be located, relocated, and then what would happen to the elementary students and how would that all occur? So it's not just the middle school, it is across the district.
Okay. And in order to, and in the course of doing this, there are going to be public hearings, I'm assuming?
Oh, well, you know, this is going to be a long process. It's going to be involved with the Board of Education and a consultant if we hire it. Ultimately, ultimately, whatever happens is probably going to be a referendum issue.
Okay. So my, my point, I guess my point there is this is, it, people seem, in my eyes, it looks like people are addressing that this is a cut and dry issue. It's not a cut and dry issue. You're doing a check on a, with committee or whoever you're going to hire, and you're going to look and see the possibilities of this, the possibilities of, the whole venue, the whole picture you're looking at, then decisions are made. It seems tonight that everybody's already made a decision, whatever case may be, oh, you're doing this, and this is bad, this is bad. Shouldn't, we're going to have more public hearings? There'll be more, and all these folks can come here to the meeting then?
Mm-huh.
Okay, I just want to make sure on that. Uh, let's see, uh, let's see, please bear with me. Okay, again, I don't really got the good answer. In the case of middle schools, the decision would be made to close. Okay. How would you go, is there any thought at all right now how the schools, the kids would be absorbed? That's my concern right now. Is, has there been a thought process?
Again, that is all part of, if we can get a study done and if this is, if it's possible, we haven't said it's possible, we think it's something that needs to be looked at right now and have our town evaluated. But that's, that will come out, you know?
And that would be more public hearings?
Oh, well, it will all be publicly discussed.
Thank you.
The Board of Education will be actively involved in everything that has to do with this.
So this is, this is merely a forecast of things that possibly can happen?
Yep.
Just point of information, it was stated about moving the middle school students to Linden and spreading the Linden kids to the other elementary schools. That, that was stated publicly last week, so that's where that's coming.
Again.
That's why, that's why I think the connection, why this focus on closing, part of it's from the meeting we had last week, because that was talked about publicly.
Bear in mind, you're dealing with me. So I'm sitting here, and I'm almost getting this feeling from everybody ranting and raving that the decision has been made. There's no decision been made.
No, it hasn't.
All right. And if there are students that may not be, if the population continues to drop, then other thoughts have to be thought of. I may be wrong on this, I don't know, maybe I'm out of line. But I mean, this is, I, I don't see any, well.
Can you wrap it up? Your time has expired, Lou.
Location.
There a time limit?
There is a time limit, and it has, time has expired, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
It did. Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Yeah, well, I wasn't prepared to speak at all. Donaldan Tinney, Seventeen Hills Crest Road. And I just had, I just have a comment. Enrollment may have decreased, but my daughter and my, um, daughter-in-law are both teachers, and our demographics have changed in the classrooms. The students that we have are a lot more difficult. We have multiple languages, we have, um, kids in school with special needs. So it's not only a numbers game, it's how we're servicing our classes. And I think it would be a, a huge disservice to our students and our teachers to increase their class size. They have enough they can, that, they have enough to handle right now. Thanks.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so?
Eric Mulhanson, two thirty-seven Unionville Ave. Parent of three children who are currently in elementary school, and hopefully we will continue in our education in Plainville in the best, um, environment possible. Something that I've heard a lot of people touch on is kind of the enrollment, and, I mean, you keep saying it's ten years, Superintendent Page clearly stated it was over twenty. And one thing that the last woman just mentioned on, which is kind of near and dear for my family, is the, um, excuse me, the social emotional learning component of schools. And if we make the classrooms bigger, that's going to get lost. And I don't know how else to say, like, we've only been in Plainville since two thousand sixteen, and we chose Plainville because we heard it had a great school system. Our kids were in private school before that and switched to public schools and have found that's the case. We've had a better experience at Tofflon than we had at a private school. We're paying four thousand dollars a year for each of our kids to go to school, and now we're using our tax dollars and getting a better education in a public setting. And part of that is the environment that our schools have created and that the teachers have created. And yes, enrollment might be down, but I'm sure we have less teachers, because like they said, the classroom sizes have stayed the same, and we need to keep them the same. We can't afford to start piling them in and taking away the reputation that Plainville has built over years. We had other opportunities in different towns we could have lived in. My, me and my wife, neither one of us are from Plainville, but we're from Connecticut, and we are well aware of all the different school districts around here. But we chose Plainville because it made sense for our family, and we feel it can make sense for a lot more families if we continue to make good decisions. And we make the decisions. It's, I'm kind of new to what's been happening here, but it sounds like we've been harking on this decision for two or three years and probably already cost ourselves tens of millions of dollars because we're just not making that decision. Allow the town to make the decision, don't make it yourselves.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else?
My name is Salam Abud, one fourteen South Washington Street. My grammar is bad, so tolerate me, please. First, I'm an engineer, so I'm, I believe in numbers, and just to make a study about should we close middle school or not, is not making sense. I heard some council members says, we need studies, who would going to reject studies? Yes, of course, we need the studies, but not to pile up the kids. I came from a, a country, from Iraq, and in Iraq we have, uh, towns, they double the shifts or triple the shifts with a classroom of fifty students. So it is horrible experience. And I know exactly what we're going to lead, it's we're going to lead higher crimes for everything. I heard some, someone here says like, schools don't teach. I don't know where he get this fact from, schools teach. And I've been in Plainville for ten years, and I'm so grateful for the school system here. But if we talk numbers, the inflation is going up, and if we can fix our middle school today by sixty million dollar, which is not even sixty million dollar, we know we're going to have rebates, we're going to have, it's we're going to end up like thirty million dollar. So if we can fix it today with this number, why don't we? The whole mentality of infrastructure, and excuse me because I'm a civil engineer, is to keep it, keep it maintained. So if we fix it today with thirty million dollar, perhaps if we keep arguing and arguing in a year from now, and I'm talking from experience, it's we're going to be like a hundred million. We're, we're not going to be able to fix it. That's we're going to be history. And I don't know who came up with the intelligent idea of closing the middle school, because then the costs were going to be way higher, they could, we cannot afford it. If people decide to come to Plainville, we're going to have two elementary schools. That means people who look for quality, they were not going to come to Plainville. They were going to ignore Plainville. Plainville will not going to be that district that they are looking to raise up their kids. So I had a lot of points I wanted to talk about why we renovate like new instead of spending. But, uh, now they came up with third option, worse than the, the, the one before. We need to fix this school, and we don't need to reduce the space and jam the kids. You want to have higher crimes, you can have it with worse schools, and that's, that's what happened. That's what statistics, that's what studies do. So I don't know where we want to go, like, why we politicize everything and says, oh, that's Democrat and that's Republican.
Thank you.
Excuse me. And, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak that has not done so? Anybody else? No? All right. Thank you for your comments. I will close the public comment section of the meeting. Moving on to the rest of the agenda, we have no old business, so on to the new business. May I have a motion for item number one, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion for the Town Council acting as Water Pollution Control Authority to authorize the Town Manager to file notice on the Plainville land record stating that a ten thousand dollar preliminary sanitary sewer assessment is pending for the eighty properties affected by the Honor Heights sanitary sewer extension project.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Just a question, because, you know, we had decided an up to ten thousand dollar beneficial assessment, like, and I don't know, I don't want to make John have to speak, but, like, like, should that say that in here? Because the way I read it, it's saying it, it is going to be ten thousand, where I think our thoughts were maybe up to ten thousand.
Well, right. I mean, I, I think it's, the, you know, the preliminary sanitary and, and the council knowing that the final assessment will be, will be taken, you know, at, at the end of the project, right?
Okay, so that, the fact it doesn't say up to ten thousand doesn't prevent us from not-
No, because you, I mean, you can go-
Moving off that number.
In this process, you can go, you can do the full cost and pass that on, or you, you know, the dependence, yeah.
All right, I just want to make sure that I understood that. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Rose.
I know I had asked Michael that question earlier today about, you know, why would we be doing this? And, because he, as he explained, it makes a lot of sense that it has to be in the land record, so if somebody were to buy a home in Honor Heights, they would know that it's coming.
Correct.
Yeah, so, just to, just by way of explanation.
And potentially, it may be less than that.
Yeah.
But, yes, that's, that's exactly right.
So that's why we were, because I, I was questioning, well, why do we, why do we have to do a preliminary? And that's-
Right.
An obvious reason why that I had not realized, Joe.
Yep. Any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Number two, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion for the Town Council acting as Water Pollution Control Authority to award bid number twenty twenty-three dash one five E, Honor Heights Sewer Extension Project to Ludlow Construction, Ludlow, Massachusetts, in the amount of one million, one hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number seven, I'm sorry, number three, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the municipal center on Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. to hear public comment on proposals for the two thousand and twenty-three Neighborhood Assistance Act.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, number four, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the recommended changes to the Phase Two North section of the Farmington Canal Heritage Trail alignment.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item five, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to establish a public hearing in the municipal center on Monday, May first, two thousand and twenty-three at seven P. M. to hear public comment regarding ordinances entitled provisions on the collective of, collection of revenue, waiver of nominal taxes, and provisions on the collection of revenue, refunds of nominal balances.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, item number six, please.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Underwood.
Motion to approve the tax refunds as listed on the addendum.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Okay. Do we have any other items of interest tonight? Michael?
Madam Chair, yes, I have one item, and I'll be brief. There is a application in Bristol for a development that abuts Camp Street and that would have an impact in terms of traffic for Plainville. This development is entirely within Bristol. It is seventy-seven, uh, high density, seventy-seven, uh, units in a high density, almost three, four stories. But all of the traffic would be entering and, and exiting off of Camp Street. And so that application is pending before Bristol Planning and Zoning. I'm not sure there's a much awareness or public, um, you know, notice in terms of, of, of the impact to Plainville residents. So we are, I am working with staff and monitoring this, and, and obviously the, the town attorney I've, I've talked to as well, just to figure out what our role in this will be, and it, it looks as though it comes down to the applicant will be requesting a curb cut to be able, be allowed to, to put that development in. And so we're reviewing the matter, and we'll probably, um, alert our, our residents to the fact that the, their applicant, application is continued to, continuation of the public hearing for May eighth, um, in Bristol. So I think we'll probably likely have some type of social media announcement on, on that, so that interested parties may be able to speak to that. But just, it was a point of information.
Okay.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a quick question? At any point, does the town have to give any kind of approval? Because I know technically, you know, the west side of Camp Street is Bristol, and I think the east side of Camp Street is Plainville. But, you know, do we ever get to, like, approve anything? Like, if they want a curb cut into Plainville, we don't get, we're planning and zoning, or?
Yeah, so we're, we're going to be put in the position of either approving or denying that, that curb cut. And that's all it is. And then that's because the entire application does not come here. It is through Bristol, because there, there is no, in this particular case, the property has not enough, um, you know, acreage to be a, a building lot or to be developed at all, so it's entirely within Bristol, but it fronts and, and-
Yep.
It's adjacent to Camp Street, and, and there isn't, you know, enough to, to-
Yep.
Whether or not we want to approve it or not.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions regarding this? Okay, thank you, Michael.
Sure.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Before we move on from other discussion of interest, I would like to clarify and say a few things for the record based off of what we heard from our public-
Of course.
Uh, the first thing was that we had a lady say that I stated at the last meeting we had at the middle school that I only represent people who voted for me, that I said something to the effect of I do not only represent the people that are in this room and on that petition, I represent everybody in Plainville. So if that was misunderstood, is I only care about the opinions of people that voted for me. I just want to clarify that. I care about all people's opinions in this town and this community, and all their input is welcome. So I just want to clarify the record on that part.
Okay.
The other thing I would like to address, a couple of things, if you could bear with me for a sec.
Sure.
There's been mention of the lack of proper safety at the, the middle school because of lack of security vestibule. I just wanted to point out that there is an armed security guard there and that the, one of the things that the schools that have been the, an unfortunate victim of a shooting have in common is that they were all soft targets without armed security guards there. And there have been investigations by police in all of those towns that, not all of them, but in some of them, where they found that the perpetrators of those instances did in fact scope out other schools and did choose to go after a soft target over a hard target with an armed security guard. So, you, I just want to say I'm confident in the safety of our schools with that armed security guard, even versus the schools that we have that don't have armed security and only have that vestibule to rely on. And I do want to point out that in Nashville, the most recent school shooting, I believe, unless there's been another one, uh, the police chief there said something to the same effect, that the delusional person that did the crime scoped out another school and chose to go with a soft target as opposed to a target that has a security guard at it. The last thing that I want to just touch on for the meeting is I would keep hearing this, uh, phrase, don't make it political, it's not political. And I, I just want to say, you know, any time that the council does something, any time that the community is making a decision on something that affects the public, it is automatically political. That's what politics is. It's, it's what we decide as a community when we come together and make these decisions. So if we're talking about a public school, it's automatically political. So if we're talking about a public school, it's automatically political. What that statement seems to me, and I don't know if it's the intention of others when somebody says that, is don't make it political means don't argue with me. You know, and I think there's room for debate on anything that could happen. So I just want to put that out there and have it on the record for this meeting. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate them. Does anybody else have anything else they'd like to share before we adjourn? All right. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are adjourned. Thank you very much for your time tonight.